Good morning and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting in the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson. I'm City Council President. And I'm joined by my colleague, Councilmember Lisa Bender. Before we begin our meeting, we have a resolution that we would like to read. We frequently before council meetings recognize special initiatives, special people in the community, that kind of thing, special efforts in our community. And so I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Bender and perhaps call her group up if she would like in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I'll wait till folks come on up. So we do this every year in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I am a breast cancer survivor of seven years. And Tina Erasmus, who works in my office, is also a survivor. I never wear pink, but I wore pink today for Tina. Before I read the resolution, I just want to thank the folks who are here from the American Cancer Society and other volunteers and advocates for survivors. Their work is so important. I share this story a lot, but when I was diagnosed, there was a drug available for treatment that hadn't been just a handful of years before. And that doubled my chances of survival. And that is a drug that was funded through research from many sources, including the American Cancer Society itself. And so this is why I'm such an advocate, because research saves lives and the funding for research saves lives. I also wanted to reflect on something, just really briefly, if my colleagues will indulge me. When I was going through treatment, I was pregnant. And there was a woman named Stacy who was the receptionist at my cancer center. So like the very worst day of my life was my first chemo infusion when I was 20 weeks pregnant. And Stacy was there to check me in. But like with me and all her patients, she was so much more of a caregiver. She loved us and cared for us. And her 10-year-old girl is on life support right now. She was hit by a car while riding her bicycle. So I've been thinking about Stacy a lot as she watches her little girl fight for her life. And just thinking about how we can all be more like Stacy. She really went above and beyond in every interaction she had. And when you're going through something like cancer or any other tragedy in your life, you know, you really notice that kindness. And I think it's something we can all kind of grab onto, especially in hard times. And I think we're having some hard times right now, right? So I'll dedicate this to Stacy and her little girl. Which is recognizing October 2017 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and October 13 as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day. Whereas there are more than 3.1 million women in the United States living with a history of invasive breast cancer. And whereas this year, 3,820 women in Minnesota are expected to be diagnosed with breast cancer and 620 to die from the disease. And whereas breast cancer ranks second as a cause of death of cancer in women, from cancer in women. And whereas breast cancer screening has been found to reduce breast cancer mortality and when breast cancers are detected at an early stage, survival is 99%. And whereas since 2002, approximately 80% of Minnesota women aged 40 and above have received a mammogram in the previous two years. And whereas only 46% of uninsured women in Minnesota have received an annual mammogram in 2010. And whereas the uninsured, underinsured, and underserved are least likely to get screening for breast cancer, which means they are more likely to be diagnosed at a late stage when chances of survival drop to 24%. And whereas in Minnesota, non-Hispanic white women are at greatest risk of being diagnosed with breast cancer. But African-American women are at the greatest risk of dying from breast cancer. And whereas women ages 15 to 54 die more frequently from breast cancer than any other cancer. And African-American women under the age of 35 die from breast cancer at three times the rate of white women. And whereas the federal government has invested more than $1.8 billion in breast cancer research since 2010, leading to the discovery of life-saving drugs. And whereas there is no cure for breast cancer. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Minneapolis that October 2017 is hereby declared to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Minneapolis. Be it further resolved that October 13, 2017, is hereby declared to be Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day in the City of Minneapolis. And we'll be lighting up the bridge in those colors for metastatic breast cancer awareness, which are pink, teal, and green. And the 35 bridges are under construction, so the lights can't be pink this year. So with that, I will thank you so much for coming and turn it over to Ellie Beaver to say a few words about an event coming up and all the work you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Bender. And thank you for doing this for, I think this is our third year? Thank you so much for doing this. Fourth year? Fourth year. Wow. I'm Ellie Beaver. I'm the Minnesota Government Relations Director from the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. And the American Cancer Society attacks cancer from all angles, including breast cancer. We do that by helping patients get well, by providing programs like Rides to Treatment through our Road to Recovery Stay Well, through our 24/7-800 number, where anyone can call at any hour of the day to get information they need about cancer and about resources in their community. We help breast cancer patients find cures by investing in cancer research, both cancer research that we raise through our events and through advocacy work we do at the federal government level to provide federal dollars for cancer research funding. And by fighting back, by working on public policy such as the SAGE program, which provides uninsured women breast and cervical cancer screenings that they need in order to detect their cancers early and stay healthy. So we invite you to help us attack cancer from all angles by joining us tomorrow morning at the US Bank Stadium. Starting at 10 o'clock, we'll be having our Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk. And everyone's invited, breast cancer survivors, caregivers, those of you that know, have loved ones who've had breast cancer, and anyone who's interested in making a difference in the fight against breast cancer. So thank you so much again for being here. And thank you to all the breast cancer survivors and breast cancer patient caregivers that we have here with us today.
Thank you. All right, that's us.[412.56][412.56][applause] I'm going to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting in the Minneapolis City Council. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Here.
Johnson is absent. Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
We have a quorum present. Councilmember Johnson is on city business. Next item we have on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda is in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. And next we have acceptance of the minutes of September 20, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next we have referral petitions, communications, and reports of the city officers to proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that referral? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next. And the first committee to report is the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee. And that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 16 items for approval this morning. Items one, two, and three are land sales. Items four, five, six, seven are new business licenses. Item eight is a change in our administrative enforcement and hearing processes. Item nine are the regular business and gambling licenses. 10 is business license operating conditions. 11 is allowing bars and restaurants to stay open during the Super Bowl until 4:00 a.m. Item 12 and 13 have to do with the Central Avenue Redevelopment Plan modifications in conjunction with the county. And item number 14 is receiving LCDA funding awards. Item 15 is a new appointment to the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority of Faith, Young. And item 16 is an order to raise and remove a building at 3950 Sheridan Avenue North. With that, I'll move items one through 16 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. All items. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next we have the Election and Rules Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item on the Elections Rules Committee, which is to appoint election judges for this 2017 elections.
Move that item.
I have approval, yes.
Councilmember Frye has moved the Election and Rules Committee report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward two items. One is accepting a federal grant through the Minnesota Department of Health for $317,000 to help serve pregnant and parenting-at-risk teens. And the second item is approving two additional appointments to the South Side Green Zone Task Force. I will move both items for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement report. Any discussion on either of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have five items. The first item is a contract amendment with Hennepin County to provide detox and services. Second item is a contract with Minnesota CIT. Third item is an emergency management performance grant. Fourth item is an urban security initiative grant. And the fifth item is the Minneapolis Police Department Mobile and Body-Worn Video Equipment Programs Audit. And I will move all items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved all items on the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee report. I will just tell people I skipped over IGR, so we'll do that after comments on the public safety report. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a comment on item number five.
Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. Recent social media and news reports have referenced this report, so before we take action on it, I'd just like to speak to some of those claims. First of all, I want to remind everyone how this audit came about, because you were all involved. Back in mid-July, my constituent was killed by a Minneapolis police officer. Neither of the officers responding had their body cameras on. Three days later, I stated my office was looking into possible updates to the body camera policies and that I would be working with audit to evaluate how body cameras are being used. On July 26, at the Public Safety Committee meeting, we directed the Office of Internal Auditor and Civil Rights to do an audit of the city's body worn camera program. This followed a press conference that morning where the mayor announced specific policy changes in the body camera program and joined my call for an audit of that program. That motion passed. It specifically asked for audit to be brought back to that committee on September 26, and it passed unanimously. And then it passed unanimously on full counsel here on August 4. The mayor also supported this timeline by way of signing that council action on August 8. No reservations were stated about that timeline. Also, at the July 26 Public Safety meeting, our auditor, Will Tetzel, made clear what the audit would be covering. He stated that the audit would measure periods before and after the recent policy change, which had just been announced that morning. And he said the first step for his report would be to the Audit Committee on September 19. That's the committee that's able to make this information public. This audit was actually an expansion in scope of an audit that we were already planning to do. I've been working on issues related to body cameras since my first year here. Those of you up here know that. Accusations that I'm new to policing issues, I find personally offensive. And the fact that those accusations have come sometimes from representatives of the mayor is even more offensive. We did work with the police department to schedule an exit meeting for this audit. We offered times the week before the release of the audit report. It was the police department that wanted it the day before the audit meeting. The morning of the audit meeting, or sorry, the morning of the exit meeting, we received word that the chief would not be attending. So while in the meeting with the deputy chief, we received word that Chief Aradondo would be having a press conference that afternoon on body cameras. I feel that was an attempt to get ahead of a pending audit release and provide incomplete information to the public. At that point, I was forced to contact media and make sure they understood those statistics were incomplete and painted an inaccurate picture. I want to be very clear. If anyone was interjecting politics into this process, this is where that happened. A press conference intended to tell a positive story about body cameras, when frankly, that was not true. In fact, that night, September 18, Mayor Hodges spread factually inaccurate information on social media. So my disappointment was increasing by the day. So here we are today. The mayor now says it is more important to get it right than get it quickly. I look forward to understanding what exactly Mayor Hodges thinks is wrong about this report. She has not, to my knowledge, faulted any of the actual data or the factual results of this audit. I have the highest confidence in people that prepared this audit, and I have the highest confidence in the people that supplied the data for it from the police department and from civil rights. I'm really curious, what exactly does our mayor think the audit didn't get right? I firmly believe that it's done right. All those deadlines along the way were adhered to, and the data was not only complete the data was only complete eight days before that audit was published. Can you imagine the public outcry about our government and police if we had delayed it? I've heard the criticism from the mayor only through the media and not directly. So I've asked her just this morning in an email that copies her leadership staff to explain these troubling direct quotes. So let me be very clear. This audit was done right, and it was on time. This is the first I've heard of a complaint from an elected official that work was done on time. And these complaints now come nearly three weeks after the audit was made public. I want to thank Councilmember Gordon for letting me know before Public Safety Committee the reservations that he had. We met again yesterday, and he understands why the audit needed to go first to Audit Committee. And I want to thank Councilmember Gordon for coming and talking directly to me. So here we are. This audit is not going to change. I care that it's accurate and that it's actionable. And you know what? So does our chief of police. The mayor said this undermines our Office of Independent Audit and the chief of police. This impact was not to undermine audit, and it sure did not undermine our chief of police. Neither of them think this. I had an opportunity to sit with our chief last Friday afternoon for hours. We shared a pot of tea on my birthday. And I know firsthand how seriously he takes the findings of this audit. I know it wasn't his idea to do this initial press conference. We talked about how great it is to have the work of our audit department, because he has a vastly different insight into this program than he had just a few weeks ago. We don't care who gets the credit for what. We both want this fixed. So I offered to work with the mayor and also my colleagues here to find resources in order to put the infrastructure into this program that it deserves. One immediate need identified by the chief is for two internal staff members, and I'll be bringing forward proposals for that in the upcoming budget. I'm grateful that with the staff directions you have before you here today to approve in item number five, Councilmember Yang, the chair of our public safety, has worked to create more oversight of our body camera program going forward. So thank you for indulging these comments.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am not on either of the committees that this work has gone through, which is audit and public safety. I noticed an extraordinary amount of sort of social media chatter and discussion in the hall at City Hall and sort of elevated back and forth about this. So I was trying to figure out what was going on. So I dug in a little bit. I watched the videos. I understand there were press conferences by mayoral candidates. You know, this is really important work. Our audit function is really important, and it's important that we trust it to be non-political and that we hopefully, I think, aspire for our audits to be done in a supportive way of departments so that they don't feel attacked or undermined by the work of the Audit Committee or the Audit Department. And so I think that's why we've had such careful work. And I know Councilmember Palmasano has been an important leader in reestablishing this function of the city. So this is nothing against that work at all. But I was surprised when I emailed our auditor with some questions. Again, this is like I have no real dog in this fight, except wanting to understand, like everyone, what's going on with our body cameras, what had happened with the audit. I was following up on some questions that Councilmember Gordon had asked in committee. So our auditor responded to my email by saying, "We no longer use the city's audit process that was on the website." And he would be sure to take it down off of the website so it wasn't confusing. And then instead of this carefully laid out and very specific process that was on the website that had been, in my understanding, used for all of the other audits that came before this one, there is now a new dynamic audit process. I followed up with the staff, who would normally be involved in the audit, and they hadn't known or understood that our audit process had changed and that there was a new dynamic process. And I think there was frustration expressed even in committee that the departments, civil rights, and the police, who would normally be involved hand in hand in improving the work of their departments, were not as included as they had been in past audits. So I think some of these questions, again, this feels like it's getting very political, but I do think we should kind of all kind of take this higher view here too and understand really what's happening with our audits. Is this one different and why? Of course, the timeliness of this issue has yet again risen up. We did, of course, have another officer involved shooting earlier this term when Jamar Clark was killed. And so, as Councilmember Palmasano said, none of this is new. Some of the reactions are new and elevated, I think. So those are my two cents. I just, I feel like maybe members of the community are as confused as I am. And perhaps we just all need to kind of take a step back and ask some of these bigger questions about how our audit function is working, get some more clarity about what process we're using, make sure it's aligned with the state's expectations. And I hope we can kind of move away from the politicizing of this important issue to our city. Our constituents expect us to work together to make sure that our body camera policy is working well and that we're working together to protect the public and keep everyone safe.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I will be very short here. I think sometimes, you know, all this extra stuff takes away from what was in the report. And I think the findings in the report were very instructive. And I think that, you know, the Minneapolis Police Department has committed to fixing those issues and making it right. And so I'm just much more focused on that, just the meat of the report and how MPD is going to attack that and fix that. So I appreciate the comments, but I mean, I certainly hope that we don't forget what's important.
Councilmember Frye.
If anyone had a problem with the process, then they shouldn't have voted for it twice. Twice. It was us that directed the process. It was us that set the schedule in motion. So if you have a problem, I think you should probably be looking internally.
Any further discussion on the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. And now we'll go back to the Intergovernmental Relations Report, which I skipped. And that committee is chaired by Council Vice President Elizabeth Glidden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. We have one item. It is the 2017 Federal Legislative Agenda. And I am moving a substituted version, which is attached already to the agenda. So if I can move that and just make a very brief comment.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to note for my colleagues that earlier this morning, I did forward the substituted version, which articulated the three items that were changed. One was a substantive item recommended by Council President Johnson, which was to add a brief paragraph opposing the end of local and state tax deduction proposed by the federal government. And the other two are just more wording changes, so non-substantive changes to our actual policy position. So I just wanted to note that for colleagues before you vote, in case you have questions.
Any discussion on the Intergovernmental Relations Report? And did you move it? I'm sorry.
I did move it.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next we have the Transportation and Public Works Report Committee report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 10 items today for consideration and approval. Item one is the Special Service District's 2018 Proposed Services and Charges. Item two is a gift acceptance from the University of Florida International for travel-related expenses for a conference that our staff presented at. Item three is a block event permit for the Zombie Pub Crawl. Item four is the Highwaith Trail Gap Layout Approval and Easements. Item five is the Contract Amendment with Key's Weld Drilling for 10th Avenue Storm Tunnel Project. Item six is the Non-Governmental Tax Exempt Parcel Streetlight Operation Fee Assessment. Item seven is the Non-Governmental Tax Exempt Parcel Street Maintenance Assessment. Item eight is the Agreement with the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization for Modeling of the East Watershed. Item nine is a bid removal for snow and ice on the public sidewalks, and that's the low-responsive bid. And then the final is also accepting the low-responsive bid for the 10th Avenue Storm Tunnel Refairs Phase Five. Madam President, I move all items.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami is absent. Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next we have the Ways and Means Committee report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means brings forward 10 items for your consideration this morning. There are five legal settlements, as well as a waiver of a conflict of interest for Gray Plant Moody. Item number six, actually, there are four of them. They're the contract amendments.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two items from zoning and planning. Item number one is rezoning on 301 and 311 East Lake Street to allow for a reception and meeting hall. Item number two is a rezoning at 2550 Pillsbury Avenue to R4 to allow the ability to add more residential units to an existing building at a later date. I'll move Items 1 and 2.
Councilmember Bender has moved the Zoning and Planning Committee report. Any discussion on either of those items? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two items from zoning and planning. Item number one is rezoning on 301 and 311 East Lake Street to allow for a reception and meeting hall. Item number two is a rezoning at 2550 Pillsbury Avenue to R4 to allow the ability to add more residential units to an existing building at a later date. I'll move Items 1 and 2.
Councilmember Bender has moved the Zoning and Planning Committee report. Any discussion on either of those items? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Introduction and Referral Calendar. The first is a motion by Councilmember Reich pursuant to notice introducing the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to administration, revising provisions to reflect the responsibilities of the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Reich pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the responsibilities of the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Reich pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the responsibilities of the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. These are a series of introductions that are related essentially to the Director of Public Works. So it seems repetitious, but it's a lot of places in our code. So a motion, again, by Councilmember Reich pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to health and sanitation, revising provisions to reflect the responsibilities of the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Then we have a motion by Councilmember Reich pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to housing, the maintenance code, revising provisions to reflect the responsibilities of the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Then we have a motion by Councilmember Reich pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to housing, the maintenance code, revising provisions to reflect the responsibilities of the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Reich pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to railroads, revising positions to reflect the responsibilities of the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Reich pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to streets and sidewalks, revising provisions to reflect the responsibilities of the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Reich pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the traffic code, revising provisions to reflect the responsibilities of the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Reich pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to water, sewers, and sewage disposal, revising provisions to reflect the responsibility of the Director of Public Works and the City Engineer. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have pursuant to notice a motion by Councilmember Kano to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to administration for first reading and referral to the committee as a whole, adding a new chapter entitled Municipal Identification Program. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by myself to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to housing, the maintenance code for first reading and referral to the Community Development Regulatory Services Committee, adding provisions for a fee during pending adverse licensing action. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Then we have resolutions. The first is the 2017 Breast Cancer Awareness Honorary Resolution that we presented before the committee meeting. Any discussion on that honorary resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We also have the 2017 National Pregnancy Infant Loss Awareness Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. And we have the 2017 Lights On After School Day Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. And we have the 2017 Lights On After School Day Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Under Unfinished Business, we have the Order to Raise and Remove the Building. Is that ready to go?
Madam Chair, that item is ready to go, and I am going to move approval of the staff recommendation to raise the building and defer to Councilmember Palmasano.
Okay. Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of comments and take a moment to talk a little bit about the vote that we're taking today that we put off for a week based on conversation with the property owner last time. It's been a long road to get to this final decision, which started when the building burned down in 2013. Since then, my office, in collaboration with many city staff and a lot of neighbors, have worked to try and make progress on this site. Despite all these efforts, it's come to a point where the community needs to move on. And I really want to thank our excellent Problem Properties staff, and particularly Scott Bakas, for his tremendous efforts to move this forward, to remove barriers for this property owner, and for the neighborhood's willingness to see this process through. You know, Scott Bakas has been sitting in back of meetings, of appeal meetings, and coming out to the neighborhood to have meetings with concerned neighbors for years. To that end, we're moving forward today to restore the site to a space that is safer for the community and will no longer be a public nuisance. It's my hope that we can still find a way to develop this property in the near future. But right now, the community deserves the vote we're taking today. So, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Goodman has moved the unfinished business item, number one, order to raise and remove Building 5336 Lindale Avenue South, and then adopting findings of the nuisance condition process review panel. Any discussion on that motion? Do you want to roll call? Mr. Clerk, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That item is adopted. And next, we have announcements. Anyone have announcements this morning? Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a brief comment. We didn't do a formal resolution, although it's important to note, we had the earlier one today on breast cancer awareness, which was tremendously important for us to do as we continue that work and supporting that work. But this is also, October is also Domestic Violence Prevention Awareness Month. And based on the impacts that have on our residents and throughout the city and the work that we're funding through our Domestic Abuse Project partnerships, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the importance of reducing and eliminating domestic abuse violence as a way to advance that important public safety issue and in terms of keeping families stable. It's a tremendous amount of work we do. So I hope everybody acknowledges that, although we haven't taken a formal resolution. I know that has all of our support.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to take an opportunity to brag about my neighborhood. I know that neighborhoods in Minneapolis have gotten the same honor in the past, but this year, the American Planning Association announced that the Seward neighborhood was one of five great neighborhoods on their annual Great Places in America list. There's only 15 that they designate every year as great places, and there's only five neighborhoods. So the Seward neighborhood in our fine city of Minneapolis was recognized as one of the great places in America.
Any further announcements? Seeing none, a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Worsami.
I'd also like to brag about Seward neighborhood as well.
Okay.
Because, you know, I share parts of Seward with Councilmember Gordon, and I actually lived in Seward until about two years ago. And I don't live too far from it as well. So it's one of the greatest places to live in Minnesota. It has a great recognition.
Councilmember Gordon, your, we're.
I'll just note that I was on the council many years, and Seward never became a great neighborhood until I was joined, I guess, by Councilmember Worsami.
All right. With that, motion to adjourn is in order, and it's motion to adjourn to a closed session to consider two litigation matters.
Move.
Second.
Move and second it all, in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.